Counselor O'Malley.
President.
Counselor Presley.
President.
Counselor Wu.
President.
And Counselor Zecham.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now I'd like to invite up Counselor Presley to introduce our faith leader for the day. And if all counselors and guests could please rise, we will be joined for an invocation. After the invocation is delivered, please remain standing and Counselor Presley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are, we have the privilege and honor of being joined, is this on?
Doesn't seem to be on.
Well, it's on. Okay, all right, we have the privilege and honor of being joined today by Father William. He is a priest for the Diocese of Christ the King and is also the Community Building Coordinator at IBA, in Inquilinos Boricuas en Accion. Father William was born in Florida and raised in Dorchester. He has parents Puerto Rican and Dominican heritage. He is happily married to his wife Gloria and has two handsome young boys, David and Daline.
Dalian.
Dalian, okay. Father William has a strong passion for people in urban communities and his desire is to serve as a voice for those who feel they don't have one and to empower them to develop, to develop their own within society. A thought at apropos and timely, in light of the fact that not only is this Hispanic Heritage Month, but in light of the devastation in the wake of Hurricane Maria in Puerto Rico, the Father William was a part of and continues to be a part of organizing efforts locally. And so I wanted him to come before us and to offer a prayer for Puerto Rico, also for the community locally here that is in a state of trauma and worry and concern and that we collectively send a message of solidarity. There is some good and encouraging news on the horizon in the wake of recovery and relief efforts, just something going in the right direction, and that didn't just happen. It is as the consequence or the result of, it's been said, when people change their minds and do the right thing, it's either because they see the light or feel the fire. I think President Trump felt the fire in response to the collective lobbying efforts of our congressional delegation and our leadership here. In fact, today the City Council was going to put forward a resolution sponsored by Counselor McCarthy and myself and Counselor Wu urging the Department of Homeland Security to temporarily waive the Jones Act with regard to Puerto Rico and Hurricane Maria recovery efforts. But we learned early this morning that President Trump has had a change of heart, and so we are encouraged by that step in the right direction. But again, now I will present to you Father William, who will offer a prayer. And I don't know that there's one on everyone's seat, but there, this will be a dual-language prayer, and so there is a call and response for the council colleagues and those in the chamber to participate in. Father William.
Grace and peace. As you can see in the prayer that was written, the bolded lines are your response to the prayer, so feel comfortable in unison to answer to the prayer. Loving and gracious God, all love and mercy compels us to the side of our Puerto Rican brothers and sisters. In our charity and in our compassion, help us stand with them. In our solidarity and in our sharing, help us stand with them. In our advocacy and in our prayer, help us stand with them. And as we turn to them in their peril, we ask your grace to go with us, to feed the hungry.
Give us your grace.
To give drink to the thirsty.
Give us your grace.
To clothe the naked.
Give us your grace.
To shelter the homeless.
Give us your grace.
To care for the sick.
Give us your grace.
To reach the trapped and stranded.
Give us your grace.
To mourn the dead.
Give us your grace.
And in reaching out, may we find you in them, and may they find you in us. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Briefly, I would like to just pray in Spanish the same prayer. Dios amoroso y misericordioso, todo el amor y la misericordia nos obligan a estar al lado de nuestros hermanos y hermanas puertorriqueños. En nuestra caridad y en nuestra compasión, ayúdanos a estar con ellos. En nuestra solidaridad y en nuestro compartir, ayúdanos a estar con ellos. En nuestra defensa y en nuestra oración, ayúdanos a estar con ellos. Y cuando nos volvamos a ellos en su peligro, te pedimos que tu gracia vaya con nosotros. Para alimentar a los hambrientos, danos tu gracia. Para dar de beber a los sedientos, danos tu gracia. Para vestir a los desnudos, danos tu gracia. Para proteger a las personas sin hogar, danos tu gracia. Para cuidar a los enfermos, danos tu gracia. Para llegar a los atrapados y a los varados, danos tu gracia. Para llorar a los muertos, danos tu gracia. Y al extender nuestra mano, podamos encontrar, encontrarte a ti en ellos, y que ellos te encuentren a ti en nosotros. Todo esto te lo pedimos en el nombre del Padre, del Hijo, y del Espíritu Santo. Amén.
Sure, of course. He would like to just say a few more words, and he said, "You're welcome."
Your mother welcomed him to sit down. Hello again, my name is Father William, and I am with Inquilinos Boricuas en Accion. I work as a community leader coordinator, and we also know it as IBA. First of all, we want to thank, thank you Counselor Presley for this, for extending the invite to join Boston City Council today. We have come together to help support those affected by the Hurricane Maria in Puerto Rico. We held a meeting this past Tuesday with IBA and the community, and we just want to thank those who came out to brainstorm with us all the ways we can help those who are affected by this tragedy. Several ways to help Puerto Rico came out of this meeting. We have identified a few organizations that are on the island and in need of any support that they can get. Some organizations that are accepting monetary and material donations are Casa Pueblo, Taller Salud, and Proyecto Matria. If you know any other organizations and/or initiatives in the works to get supplies to Puerto Rico, please get in touch with IBA, and we thank you. Before I finish my part, I would, in the parishes that we have, we always do a benediction to kind of push people and empower them to get socially active in their own communities. If we do this and we all start getting together in unity, working towards our common goals, I think that we can cause a change. And it's the Franciscan benediction and prayer of Saint Francis, and it says like this, "May God bless you with discomfort at easy answers, half-truths, and superficial relationships, so that you may live deep within your heart. May God bless you with anger at injustice, oppression, and exploitation of people, so that you may work for justice, freedom, and peace. May God bless you with tears to shed. For those who suffer from pain, rejection, starvation, and war, so that you may reach out your hand to comfort them and to turn their pain to joy. May God bless you with enough foolishness to believe that you can make a difference in this world, so that you can do what others claim cannot be done. And the blessing of God, who creates, redeems, and sanctifies, be upon you all, as you love and pray for each other forever and ever. Amen."
Amen.
Puerto Rico se levanta, México se levanta, nos levantaremos, we will rise. Thank you so much.
God bless you.
Sanctify the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Father, and thank you Counselor Presley. We'll begin with approval of the minutes from, oh, oh my goodness, I nearly skipped over the most important part of this meeting, which is to publicly honor and thank our Shattuck Awardees. As you all know, the Henry L. Shattuck Awards are given by the Boston Municipal Research Bureau every year to honor the unsung heroes who work for the city of Boston. These people truly represent the best of public service, the best of the city. We have had the chance to celebrate with them for special galas and dinners and earlier in the, at the Boston City Council offices, but we do want to invite everyone up again here in our beautiful venue for this meeting to thank you once more publicly and ask you to take a photo with the council. So I want to invite up Sam Tyler to join us from the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, Heather Campisano from the Boston Planning and Development Agency, Martin Kane from the Boston Elections Department, Sherri Lewis DePonte from Boston Latin School who could not join us today, Gino Provenzano from the Boston Police Department, Deborah Pollan from the Boston Schools Department, Maria Santos from the Boston Public Health Commission, Barry Stafford from the Boston Fire Department, who also could not be here today, and the Chairman's Award winner, Henry Vitale, from the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. And last but not least, I know the man behind the camera who is overseeing all this, Kerry Jordan from the Boston City Council. So if everyone could come up. So again, we conveyed the official resolutions earlier before the meeting to spare you all all the comments, but thank you all to the Awardees, and we'll get a group photo now. Oh, wait, sorry. Counselor Presley, hop in the photo.
That is all over again, all over again. Come on, everybody.
Oh, so sorry. Come on, Tito. The last round.
Great. Congratulations. So, congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations.
All right, plenty of photos. Thank you so much to all of our award winners for your service.
Counselor McCaffrey.
Please note that Counselor McCarthy is here, and we'll jump in with approval of the minutes from last meeting. Any amendments or changes? Seeing or hearing, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved, and on to communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1270, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $170,017 in the form of a grant for the Community Transit Grant Program awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to be administered by the elderly commission. The grant will fund mobility management software and hardware that will improve efficiency of the senior shuttle operation.
Docket number 1270 will be assigned to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 1271, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $120,000 in the form of a grant for the Love Your Block Initiative. The initiative funding comes from various donors to be administered by the Neighborhood Services. The grant will fund a mini-grant program for neighborhood beautification projects.
Docket number 1271 will also be assigned to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1272, notice is received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of August 23, 2017.
Docket 1272 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1249, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of $31,122, I'm sorry, $31 million, no, 30, I'm sorry, $31,122,743. This is a misprint, I'm sorry. I think it's $31,122,743 for the Boston Public Schools for the FY-18 to cover cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union Local 66, AFT-Mass AFL-CIO. The terms of the contract are September 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2018. The major provisions of the contract include a base wage increase of 2% in September of 2016 and 3% in September of 2017. The FY-18 budget requests include a reserve for collective bargaining, a separate appropriation to fund projected collective bargaining increases. A separate audit has been filed to reduce the appropriation to support $20 million of the supplemental request. The remaining $11,122,743 will be supported with other general revenue.
Madam Clerk, could you also read docket 1250 in the record, and then I'll ask the chairman to speak on both.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 1250, message and order to reduce the appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $20 million to provide funding for the Boston School Department for the FY-18 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union Local 66, AFT-Mass AFL-CIO.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On dockets 1249 and 1250, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I report out, I'd like to acknowledge in attendance the President of Boston Teachers Union, Jessica Tang. The Committee on Ways and Means held a public hearing on dockets 1249 and 1250 on Wednesday, September 27th. James Williamson, interim Budget Director for the city of Boston, Eleanor Lorenz, Chief Operating Officer, Emily Quarespash, Assistant Superintendent of Human Capital, and Erica Giampietro, Managing Director of Long-Term Planning for the Boston Public Schools, testified on behalf of the administration. Negotiations for this contract lasted, reported 18 months, and the total cost of the two-year contract is $42.7 million. Procedurally speaking, docket 1249 appropriates the funds, and docket 1250 moves funds to the school budget for dispersal. Mr. Williamson explained that the FY-18 appropriation of $31,122,743 will be funded with $20 million from the collective bargaining reserve, and the remaining balance of $11 million will be funded from $10 million in increased resources from property taxes, particularly new growth, and the remaining $1.1 million coming from increased building permit revenues. The contract has a series of cost factors, including base increase, 2% effective the first pay period in September of 2016, 3% increase effective the first pay period in September of 2017, a COLA, Cost of Living, adjustment will also be applied to all rates and differentials in the prior contract, including health and welfare contributions, as well as Schedule A extended time payment. It also provides access for provisional teachers and power of professionals in year two and three to be added to the parental leave policy. Power of professionals who substitute for a teacher will also see an increase in compensation from $6 per hour to $9 per hour for school year 2017 to '18, and $10 per hour on 8/21/18. The contract also included language and policy modifications that addresses formalization of mutual consent for hiring teachers and the removal of the $1,250 stipend associated with open posting positions. Boston is the first to codify mutual consent hiring in the country, and removing the stipend will save BPS approximately $500,000. It also achieves discretion to staff-powered professional positions, supporting students with autism and/or emotional impairments with individuals most qualified to do so. It resolves the issues of returning itinerant service providers who can qualify for standardized mileage reimbursement versus needing to provide itemized reimbursement forms. It provides substitute teacher coverage for individualized testing in grades K-2 to 3, extended to, included two additional days annually for dual-language programs testing in two languages. Repurposes existing lead teacher funding into Teacher Leadership Fund to be allocated by a joint BPS/BTU panel, and it agrees to convene a multi-stakeholder commitment to examine issues surrounding high-quality assessment systems. Discussion at the hearing included many of the items listed above, and also the status of excess teachers in the BPS system. The COLA payments were discussed, and it was reported that will not affect the OPEB schedule. The BTU represents 8,000 members within the Boston Public Schools, including teachers, substitute teachers, nurses, powerful professionals, and applied behavioral analysis specialists. As Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend passage of these dockets.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to support docket 1249 and also commend our colleague for thorough hearing yesterday. And in doing so, in supporting 1249, I'm pledging support to our teachers and all school personnel to make sure we continue to make progress with our schools, as well as for all of our children, and also to embrace some of the reforms that are in this contract that were addressed at yesterday's hearing. And also to commend our teachers union, I see President Jessica Tang is here. They had a tremendous event over the weekend, it was their annual back-to-school book fair, where they gave over, as Counselor Nissab George told me, it was over 40,000 books. Each kid and some parents got 15 books each, as well as there was a tent there with lots of, you know, services, wraparound services, before and after-school program services, so all the support services that we need for our families, for our children, for our parents, and for also for grandparents raising their grandchildren. So I fully support our colleague, Counselor Siomo's recommendation, and we'll go on record as supporting docket 1249. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I want to thank Counselor Siomo for the hearing that allowed us to hash out what this contract means. I want to first congratulate Jessica Tang and her team for being elected and the service that you have done prior. I enjoyed working with the BTU and the No On Question 2, because I believe that has a direct reflection in our budget on an annual basis in terms of the resources that we either have or don't have. I would also note, we still are staffing nurses in a fraction, not as a whole person. And we are not, one person cannot be in two places at one time, even someone who is my size. We need to have a nurse in every school, and we know that we have many young people who suffer from trauma, many of them, and we know that the reason why, the greatest reason why young people stay back from healthcare reasons is asthma in the Boston Public Schools. And so that is a critical component, and I think that is actually lacking. We are making progress, but we definitely need to make more progress there. In addition, I think it is critical that we have reformed with SPC teachers. I want to see those teachers put back to work and put in classrooms and staffed so that the schools, and I've been to many schools in the city of Boston, they are saying that they are understaffed. And last year, based on these staffing issues, we had some dangerous situations that happened in some of our schools where there were students as well as teachers who were harmed in those situations because we do not have the staffing. So it is absolutely critical that we move, and by the way, we're paying for SPC teachers. This is in the contract already. We are still currently paying for them. Give them the opportunity to be actually moved over to a full-staffed position, especially considering that we have picked up the tab for the past four years, and this will also mean that we will pick it, pick it up for another year. I believe, and I will be supporting this contract, I believe it moves us forward on terms of the compensation, the paid family leave, which is something that we should do for all business units, all units in the city of Boston. That is a basic right, and I want to thank Counselor Wu for her work there, and also Counselor McCarthy on that. It is critical that we do that, but it's not only for our teachers. As public servants, we should help and aid in ensuring that families are not making a decision as to whether or not they want to work or whether or not they want to grow their family. I guess finally, I would just thank the Boston Public School teachers for your achievement. We live in a day and age where there's cynicism all over when it comes to public schools and public teachers. Well, you know what? We could stick our chest out. We're number one in fourth grade math scores, number one in eighth grade reading scores in the country for large public districts, and we either rank number one or number two in public districts nationally. So when folks say that they're doing great, well, you know what we're doing great too. And we have an opportunity to do better when we finally fully fund the Boston Public Schools. There was $11 million cut to 49 public schools this school year. And when we support, encourage, and give our educators, our young people, and staff the proper that they deserve for the most important work that we do. And I would note, as we look at bringing companies to the city of Boston, we need to make sure that we're not only increasing funding for education for a company, we should be doing it because it's the right thing to do. We should be investing in our young people because it is simply the right thing to do, and they represent... and they represent one hundred percent of our future and we are a knowledge economy and they are inextricably connected with the future of the city of Boston. I will be supporting this. I want to thank the team who put this together and also again, I want to thank Counselor Siomo for such an expedited and good hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Would anyone else like to speak? At this time, Counselor Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of both dockets. We'll vote one at a time. On docket 1249, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1249 has been passed. And on docket 1250, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post say nay. The ayes have it and docket 1250 has been passed. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1273, Counselor Wu offered the following order, proposing the City Council enter executive session to consider internal administrative matters.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think as all of you all know, the council president's role includes overseeing the administrative internal matters of the council. Our former council president, Linehan, had started with some changes and I've worked to continue those, so would like the opportunity to give you all an update on some internal and personnel matters. So, unless anyone has some questions now, I'd like to move to take a vote to pass this order, suspend and pass this order, and then we'll wait until the end of the meeting after the rest of business is concluded to actually convene in closed executive session. Any questions or comments? Okay, then Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 1273. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Savi George. Counselor Savi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson.
Yes.
Counselor Lamatina.
Yes.
Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zachem. Counselor Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 1052 received unanimously vote.
1273.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 1273 has been passed and again, we'll wait until the end of the meeting to go into executive session.
Docket number 1274, Counsel Zachem offered the following order for hearing regarding corporate rental and short-term rental housing.
Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Madam President, this hearing order is, comes out of a result of several things that have been happening around this city, but in particular, in some of the neighborhoods I represent, a lot of work has been done by community activists, particularly the Fenway Community Development Corporation, the Alliance of Downtown, civic organizations and others around short-term rentals. This hearing is intended to look at a specific aspect of this and that's when we have large-scale development projects that are working their way through the review process, particularly the BRA process, Article 80. And there have been some claims, some possibilities, that from the very beginning, some folks are planning to master lease a significant portion of the units they're constructing to short-term rental operators, whether that's Airbnb or HomeAway or some, you know, whatever the different companies are called. And while this certainly, you know, this isn't something specifically looking to prohibit, it's important that we have the transparency as part of the development review process that we know if a building is proposed to have two-hundred-and-fifty units and fifty of those are going to be set aside right off the bat for short-term rentals, that has a real impact on the neighborhood and on our city as a whole, on our tight housing market. So, I think it's important that we talk with our development review agencies, our planners, obviously the BPDA, ZBA, neighborhood organizations, and others to make sure that we have a process in place where we ask people what their plans are around parking, around green space, around height and design, and this is just another piece of that puzzle that with the changing economy, the changing housing market, we need to look at. So, I look forward to having a quick hearing and working with these neighborhood advocates and other stakeholders to address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor O'Malley's name? Please add Counselor Lamatina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Linehan, Counselor Presley. Please add Counselor Jackson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Campbell. Please add the chair's name.
Counselor Baker.
And please add Counselor Baker, all the way at the end.
Counselor Jackson was on, yes.
Docket number 1274 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Personnel orders.
Docket number 1275, Counselor Wu for Counselor Presley offered the following order.
Counselor Presley moves for suspension and passage of docket 1275. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1275 has been passed.
Docket number 1276, Counsel Wu offered the following order.
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 1276. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1276 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there is, there's one late filed matter.
Yes.
There's one late filed matter, which, I think there's another late filed first, right? One late filed matter which will be added to the agenda in the absence of objection. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you could please read that first late file.
Offered by Counselor Jackson in the city of Boston and the City Council, resolution in support of the people of the Caribbean, including and especially the people of Puerto Rico in the wake of Hurricanes Irma and Maria and urging federal, state, and local authorities to establish emergency response infrastructure in Boston without delay. Whereas many of Boston-based organizations participating in relief efforts believe large numbers of Puerto Rican residents will likely migrate to population centers in the continental United States, including Boston, to join extended family and friends because of the damage left by both storms in Puerto Rico. Therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council stands in solidarity with the people of Puerto Rico and the people of the wider Caribbean. We have undergone such extraordinary damage from both Hurricane Irma and Hurricane Maria and therefore be it further resolved that the Boston City Council urges the Federal Emergency Management Agency known as FEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency known as MIMA, and the city of Boston's Office of Emergency Management, Department of Neighborhood Development, and other departments of the city of Boston to immediately coordinate with Boston-area churches, humanitarian organizations, and other community actors involved in relief operations in Puerto Rico to implement the necessary emergency infrastructure in Boston such as reception centers for arriving U.S. citizens and other residents of Puerto Rico without delay or any bureaucratic hurdles.
Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I want to start with a quote from Luis Munoz Martin, who is the founding father of modern-day Puerto Rico. And he said, "We must live like angels and produce like the devil." We must live like angels and produce like the devil. Don't tell my mom that I read that quote, but I believe this is critical in that what we are looking at is a hundred percent, a hundred percent of the power grid in Puerto Rico is damaged. And I want to thank Counselor O'Malley for the work that he's been doing with the environment. Couple of things that we need to, one, we need to wake up and learn that this can happen in the city of Boston. But in this time, right now, we need to understand that the city of, the state of Massachusetts has two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand Puerto Ricans. The city of Boston, from the 2010 census, has thirty thousand five hundred Puerto Ricans and Springfield has fifty thousand eight hundred Puerto Ricans that we know of. People are coming to Boston and we need to treat this like the earthquake in Haiti, which we know put a great deal of pressure on our, on our schools, on our housing infrastructure, on our churches, on our charities in the city of Boston. It also means that we need to treat it like Hurricane Katrina, where there are still people who are Hurricane Katrina refugees who have, who are living in the city of Boston. People are coming with nothing, just simply what they have on their backs. And they are Americans and it is our job to be ready, to be prepared, and to be coordinated in our efforts. We saw the city of Boston, when the earthquake in Haiti happened, leap into coordination efforts that I would say are unrivaled in the whole United States of America. We need to do the same thing now. We need to do it for our Puerto Rican brothers and sisters, our Mexican brothers and sisters, those from some of the U.S. Virgin Islands. We have to step up and it is critical that our council and all of us as individuals step forward. So, I bring this as a resolve because I don't want to be part of the component of any bureaucratic hurdles. We need to resolve and we need to step forward and act and lead and not follow on this matter. Our Puerto Rican brothers and sisters have been reaching out to us. I'm sure all of us have heard from them. We need to ensure that, as the quote Counselor Presley often references, it's an African proverb, "When we pray, we need to move our feet." We need to move our city forward to make sure that we do right by the brothers and sisters and our comrades from Puerto Rico. And so, I will ask that we suspend and pass this, but also that we move forward and ensure that we are acting on this. I will, at the end, read of an initiative that Pastor Sam Acevedo is leading with the Church Lion of Judah and that we can all take part in. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
And thank you, Counselor, for putting this forward. I know some of you are well aware, over the weekend, I was contacted by, I contacted Suffolk University. Last year, I completed my master's degree and one of the courses that I took was a comparative public policy class and I spent five days with the government and the people of Puerto Rico. I had put the resolution together to raise the, to lower the Jones Act, to waver the Jones Act and encourage President Trump to do so. Apparently, he got my memo. It was about eight days late, but it happened. So, my, so Ron, thank you, Ron, pulled my resolution from the jacket, but it's all in the spirit of moving forward. And although it's eight days late, you know, America, we've been giving for years and years and it's time to step up again for our citizens down in Puerto Rico, as well as the islands that we all visit on vacation. The pictures that I saw of the small host area that I stayed in, it's completely, completely destroyed. The Walmart, the Walgreens, rather, the small breakfast place that we used to stay at, completely underwater. The devastation is tremendous, so we need to step up, so I appreciate certainly this and hopefully, we're not going to wait another eight days before we get our tails in gear. Thank you, and I'd like to sign off.
Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor McCarthy's name? Please add Counselor Linehan, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Zachem, Counselor Presley, Counselor Lamatina. Please add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Baker. Please add the chair's name.
Can I say one more thing?
Would anyone else like to say anything?
No.
Okay, and Counselor McCarthy.
Sorry, I just, thanks for letting me go one more time. I do want to thank Suffolk University and Professor Nicole Rivers.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. At this time, Counselor Jackson moves for suspension and passage of the late filed matter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post say nay.
Out of the vote.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the late filed?
Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Savi George. Counselor Savi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson.
Yes.
Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina.
Yes.
Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley.
Yes.
Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zachem. Counselor Zachem, yes. Madam President, the first late filed is received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first late filed matter has been passed with a unanimous vote. Onto the green sheets. Would anyone like to pull a matter? Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pull docket number 1052 from page five of 10.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 1052 into the record?
Thank you. In the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, docket number 1052, the sponsor Mayor Walsh. Message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for the FY18 Success Link Employment Program formerly known as Youth Works, awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, passed through the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, to be administered by the Youth Engagement and Employment. The grant will fund hiring at-risk youth for placement at various community-based organizations around Boston.
Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Madam President and Madam Clerk. As you're all well aware, every year during our budget process, we all advocate vigorously for summer jobs because we all see the real value of this program. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has made this grant money available to ensure that the population that has the most to gain from summer employment is able to be placed in community-based organizations throughout our city. As the summer comes to a close, the Department of Youth Engagement and Employment needs this grant to be approved by our body as soon as possible to ensure this program can be effectively completed for this fiscal year and continue for the next fiscal year. I ask that we suspend the rules and accept and expend this grant and continue to support our at and proven risk youth by ensuring that they are gainfully employed during the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. At this time, Counselor Presley moves for passage of docket 1052. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1052 has been passed. Any other matters from the green sheets? None? Okay, then at this time, we will, we will pause for statements at the end after executive session and memorials after that. At this time, council, the meeting will be in recess and council will convene in executive session. Consent agenda, but do need to ratify that agenda. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post say nay. The ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted. Are there any, we'll pause now for any statements or announcements to the group? These just from Cass, so we'll move on. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I have been in touch with EBA. We obviously had a representative earlier today. It's really the center of the Puerto Rican community in the city of Boston, as well as Lion of Judah Church. And there is an opportunity for us to partner with them in the collection of materials for Puerto Rico, the collection of cash donations to help people from the community, and I will forward that to everyone's office. What I've done is I've offered my outside office as a receptacle place for these, these goods to be able to, to ensure that people don't necessarily have to go out of, out of that neighborhood. I would love to see a network of receptacles across the city of Boston so people can have a convenient place to do what we can to make sure that we help those that are in need. And I will send that message around to everyone on the And I will send that message around to everyone on the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Anyone else? Okay, then I will ask all counselors and guests to please rise. Today, the Boston City Council will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Lamatina, Joseph D. "Buzz" Fleming Jr. For Counsel O'Malley, Jack Linsell, Hugh L. Murphy, and Eric D. Pina. For Counselors Linehan and Flaherty, Natalie Flynn and Claire Ann Nie. For Counselors Lamatina and Flaherty, Robert W. "Bob" Kilcoyne. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again Wednesday, October 4th, 12 noon, in the Ayonella Chamber at Boston City Hall. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Council is adjourned.